And we'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, ask for a roll call please.
Supervisor Riley?
Present.
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 Trustee Joffre?
Present.
Trustee Breck?
Trustee Mills?
Madam Supervisor, do you have my name?
Thank you, we do have a quorum. We'll go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda for October eighth, twenty twenty five.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda is approved as presented. I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Any person may come forward at this time to address the board. Anyone who wishes to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and an address for the record. Do we have anybody that'd like to speak for comment? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and move on to an approval of the minutes. May I get a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. I'm gonna go ahead and open up our public hearing for Z O A number twenty five dash two thirty two, Inglewood West, P U D rezoning, major amendment, page seven of the packet, and the public hearing is now open at six thirty one. Is there anyone who'd like to come up and speak? Okay, I will say that we did get a communication through email in. One of the residents is concerned about light industrial being in that area, so I believe all of the trustees got that correspondence, and when the time comes for us to look at that actual line item on the agenda, we can discuss that further, and we do have our township planner to address those and speak issues and answer questions on that, so. Okay, seeing no one to speak on the public hearing, I will go ahead and close the public hearing at six thirty two. And the communications will be attached to the minutes. All right, may I please get a motion for the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda, items seven point one through seven point nine.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, consent agenda is approved. Go ahead and move it on to item nine point one. May I please have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize the supervisor and clerk to enter into agreements with D H Asphalt Company and Harper Electric Incorporated, subject to the township attorney approval, and authorize payment to Vanstone O'Brien Incorporated to complete milling asphalt and pavement installation as part of the public safety facility improvement project for an amount not to exceed two hundred ninety-five thousand, five hundred ninety-eight dollars, ninety-eight dollars and sixteen cents.
Support.
Okay, do we have any discussion on this? I will tell you that the next three items are all kind of in the same vein. If have Director Gray come on up and just kind of give a quick overview of what we're voting on, it'll kind of cover the next three, if there's any questions as well.
Absolutely, so, thank you. The first item is the paving portion of the back portion of the Department of Public Safety Facility Improvement Project. There are portions of the paving that will be done through Blue Scope, through the original contract, but there were portions of the paving that was set aside to be done separately at a cost savings to the township. The rest of these items are also items that were done under the construction management agreement with Vanstone O'Brien for the same purpose. The second item, nine point two, is for Digicom Global and Harper Electric for the installation of fire alerting system. This is the system that alerts the fire personnel when there is an emergency call. There's lights and audio that kick on in various portions of the building, so it needs to be wired in through Harper Electric, but also with Digicom. And nine point three, it involves Johnson Sign and also Harper Electric, who's also working on this whole project. Johnson Sign and Harper Electric, with the assistance of Vanstone O'Brien, will be moving the entrance sign, the public facing sign out in front of the Department of Public Safety, approximately eighteen feet to the east to allow for a larger entryway for the public entrance to the building.
Okay, any questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so then I will go ahead and ask for a vote. All in favor of nine point one?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, nine point one passes, and if I can get a motion for my nine point two.
Madam Chair, I move to authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign agreements with Digicom Global Incorporated and Harper Electric Incorporated for the installation of a fire alerting system and related project hardware as part of the public safety facility improvement project at a cost not to exceed a hundred and three thousand, four hundred sixty-two dollars and eleven cents, subject to the township attorney approval.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this one? Obviously, we've already had the recap, but all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. May I please have a motion for nine point three?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize the supervisor and clerk to enter into agreements with Johnson Sign Company and Harper Electric Incorporated, subject to the township attorney approval, and authorize the payment to Vanstone O'Brien Incorporated for the sign relocation as part of the public safety facility improvement project for a cost not to exceed nine thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. May I please have a motion for nine point four?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign an agreement for professional engineering services from Stand Tech Consulting for the proposed west side sewer improvements in the amount not to exceed two hundred ninety-eight thousand, six hundred dollars, subject to the township attorney approval.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this one? We do have the Director of Utilities here as well?
I do, I do have a question.
Call up Director Wayland here, Judge.
Hi, I just want to know approximately if you can tell me how long, like piping, when does it need to be replaced? What is the shelf life of piping?
So, this is duct lined pipe, so all different pipes have different lifespans. A duct lined pipe is usually good for twenty-five to fifty years, just depending on the soil types and what it hauls. This hauls sanitary sewage, so it's a shorter lifespan.
Okay, and so how long do you expect a project like this to take?
So, to complete the project, it depends on what we're looking at, a couple avenues, and what this is, is a proposal to look at a project, which we'll present to you later, later in the year if it comes to fruition. But from construction start, if you do direct drilling, which is what we're preferred, it could take anywhere from a month to install the pipe, another month for restoration. So, you know, three to six months from the time it actually kicks to it being live.
Okay, and my last question is, so the consulting services, so this three hundred thousand dollars is solely for the...
Design.
Design.
Yep, so what that does is that does, it's your design of it, so the feasibility of the routes that we're looking at, the pipe materials, it's all the permitting, it's the bid documents for the project, as well as any easement that we need to acquire, so it's not the easement costs if we have to purchase easement, but permitting with the road commission and easement acquisitions if we have to do that.
Okay, okay, perfect, thank you.
Anything else?
More questions or any comments? All right, I will go ahead. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. May I please have a motion for nine point five?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize supervisor and clerk to enter into agreement with Local Light Maintenance Group, L C, for road repair service and with Stand Tech Consulting for engineering services, at a cost not to exceed seventeen thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars, thirteen cents, including repair and contingency, subject to township attorney approval.
Second.
All right, we do actually have Director Wade here today. Actually, I'm gonna call you up to kind of explain a little of what happened here, because this is a little more... Little backstory in this one.
Thank you. So basically, on July first, a vehicle struck and damaged a portion of the boardwalk. You know, we immediately closed it down, police report was filed. We're currently going through the whole insurance, a cost recovery claim, but as the boardwalk is sitting there with broken parts to it, we are... Staff is concerned that it's more of a safety concern at this point. We also don't want to let the boardwalk potentially fail even more than where it's at. So, we're going this route to just fix it and go after the claims afterwards.
We had quite a few residents contact us about this and concerns, and obviously, the longer you wait, sometimes the more damage that can happen.
You can get more damage, and it's also a main area for them to walk, so we don't want them walking on the road or doing anything like that as well.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I just want to say it back in my own language, make sure I've coded correctly. So, you know, there's a cost here to do the repairs and things of that nature, but this in no way will encumber our process to try to recover for others' insurance, many other things of that nature. So, I mean, ultimately, there's maybe a net zero for us because of the insurance claim, but we just want to...
Yeah, we want to do the work now, and then whatever costs we can get back from insurance is what we're going after.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
And kudos to you and your staff for looking into that. They made sure that all, everything you just said was gonna happen, so...
Perfect, thank you.
And being responsive to our residents, so. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. If I could also get a motion for nine point six?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign two agreements from Summit Fire Protection for the installation of a security access system at the community center at seven oh one West Ellsworth Road, for a cost not to exceed thirty-four thousand, five seventy-four, ten cents, including ten percent contingency, subject to township attorney approval.
Second.
Okay, and we do have our building director here for this one and for the next question, our next item. If anybody has any questions on this, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but... Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. May I please have a motion for nine point seven?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize a proposed change order, number six, for project three five seven nine from Vanstone O'Brien Incorporated for the civil design of the community center parking lot expansion at seven zero one West Ellsworth Road for a cost, including third-party soil testing and agency fees of thirty-five thousand, two hundred sixty dollars, subject to the township attorney approval.
Support.
All right, any discussion on this one?
Yep, I do, I do have a question.
If you can come on up. Director Severo?
You know, I always thought the community center, kind of where it's situated in that little circle, and you come off the circle, you have to make an immediate left. Are they gonna, are they gonna find a new opening for?
At this, at this point, no. We're gonna still have the same entrance.
I'm very sad.
Although the county, the road commission, may ask us to adjust that.
Oh, okay.
We are looking at possibly coming out through the back parking lot, too, but...
Yeah, I've always thought, like, coming off of that road might be a little bit better, because as soon as you get off the circle, it's like...
You're in, you're on, yeah.
And, you know, it's a polling location. I always worry about the voters who are going there in addition to the seniors and people who come to visit the...
That side of the parking lot is mainly for employees.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you know how public will use it sometimes.
I know it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion passes. May I please have a motion for nine point eight?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the first reading of Z O A twenty-five dash two three two to amend the commercial portion of the Inglewood Park West, P U D, eastern portion of the development located on Lavender Lane between South State Street and Avis Drive, parcel number L dash twelve dash twenty-one dash three hundred dash zero one zero in section twenty-one, Pittsfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Second.
All right, this is the one, obviously, that we had the communication that you all received. I'm gonna go ahead and ask our township planner, Ben Carlisle, to come up and kind of address a little about that, because the concern for the resident is that is, there's, as you all saw from the correspondence, it is a fairly heavy industrial area, and they're afraid that some of the industrial thing will be a little more noisy and more industrial than they want in their area. So, I believe the planning commission had vetted it out, but Ben will explain to you, and then we can decide from there.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Ben Carlisle, Carlisle Wharton Associates. It's good to be here and finding you tonight. Just a little bit of background before I jump into this. This originally was approved as a multi-use P U D development. The first component was the residential portion, which is obviously under construction and actually is, have some residents actually living in that residential portion of the development. The second part of that was a, was to be approved as a spec light industrial flex type office space, and that was approximately a hundred and ten thousand square feet or so. After consultation with the developer, they felt that there was a better use for that or a refined, or refined use for that particular portion, so they came back and sought an amendment to construct a seventy-one thousand flex space. So, it's still more of a light industrial type of uses in facility, but it's more of a flex space. And the most comparable thing I can think of in the township is kind of what we have off Airport Plaza, where Zingermans, all the Zingerman stuff, it's kind of that type of, of type of facility. So, there's gonna be seventy-one thousand square feet, broken up into a number of suites, and some suites may be combined for larger suites, but the, but the purpose is, is to allow for flexible space, light industrial flexible space, for use for, could be for offices, could be used for a personal hobby, for someone that wants personal hobby and wants to use it, for those types of uses. One of the issues, or there were two significant issues that we spent a lot of time focusing on. The first was an issue of parking. We wanted to ensure that there was adequate parking, because they wanted, the developer wanted flexibility with the uses, but we had to make sure that there was adequate parking for regardless of what uses were gonna be there or not. We came on a number that we all felt comfortable with, based on our experience working with similar developments, as well as the applicant's experience. They've done this all over the country in different locations. So, parking, we felt we had, found a good solution based on the parking number. The second issue, where we probably spent the most time, was the issue of uses. And I was particularly concerned during the review of this, knowing that there's residential neighbors really directly adjacent to this property, that the uses were not gonna be a negative impact or on those, on those adjacent properties. So, we spent a lot of time on the uses, and the applicant named a bunch of uses that we didn't feel comfortable with, so we whittled that, those useless down. So, the issue that came up was the issue of light industrial. And I used the term light industrial in my introduction, but when you actually look at the permitted uses, light industrial is not a named use in the allowed district. What is most similar would be like a trade workshop perhaps could go there, so, you know, someone either as a hobby could have a trade workshop, or a plumber, for example, could have their, storage of their materials in this particular location. The other one that is most similar would be fabrication and assembly, and this is very small-scale fabrication and mostly assembly and final, kind of the final last piece before it gets shipped out. Again, those are the things that are most similar to light industrial. In addition, we do have some small-scale production of food products that's allowed, but that's what we would consider what Zingermans does at their facility would be similar, and that's a conditional use, as well as any automotive services that would be allowed there, so if someone wants to come in there and tinker on their car, et cetera, again, that would be a conditional use. So, we do feel like...
Can you explain what this conditional use is?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I, just for clarification.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, a conditional use is a use that is maybe appropriate in certain locations, and it may be not. And it gives the planning commission the flexibility to review that use in a fine-tooth manner and a case-by-case basis, and if necessary, either not allow that use because of the particular circumstances of what the proposed use, or allows the planning commission to put conditions on that use to mitigate the impacts on adjacent properties. So, with a conditional use, they're typically a little more intense uses, and they're typically uses that may impact neighbors, but it allows the planning commission a lot more discretion in terms of the review and approval of those said uses. So, any uses that we think were gonna be potentially impactful on adjacent properties, they're listed in the conditional use section. So, to answer, a long way of answering your question...
No, I really appreciate the...
Is... We whittle the uses that were, one, allowed in the underlying zoning district that the applicant originally proposed, because we didn't feel comfortable with it, and they worked, I had good competency developer, they worked very closely with us to get this to this point, working through this issue. And then, secondly, any uses that we had some potential questions where they may have some impact, we listed those as conditional uses, so they would have to go through a very detailed review by the planning commission. And the other thing I should mention about the conditional use, they do also require a public hearing, so those neighbors would get notified if a use was a conditional use being proposed, and they could come and speak to that issue for the planning commission. So, with all that being said, we do think there's enough protection in this ordinance to address any concerns of the neighbors. Sorry, last thing, sorry, I know you got a question.
No, please, yes.
So, I was also concerned about the residential developer who's next door building homes and what their feeling was about having this use. They were, I coordinated very closely with them through this process, made sure they're aware of what was being proposed there, make sure they were comfortable with it, because it would obviously impact the sales of their homes, et cetera. And they were also very comfortable with what was being proposed and the protection the township put on the plan, so they were on board with this as well.
Okay, no questions, go ahead.
I, sorry. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure I heard you say that light industrial is not a use that is defined in the zoning ordinance?
It's not, no, it's defined in the zoning ordinance, it's not a use, it's a listed use in the table of uses.
Okay.
So, the table of uses, which actually is in the P U D ordinance, which you will adopt, supersedes the zoning ordinance. So, they are bound to these specific uses that's listed and defined in the P U D agreement. So, it supersedes the uses in the ordinance. So, you'll see light industrial named in the zoning ordinance. It's not listed in the use table of uses here in what they're allowed to do on this particular property.
Okay, so, but if they had a person who wanted a light industrial use, would you go through the zoning order, ordinance to determine if that is a light industrial use?
I would get more clarification from, and this happens a lot with uses, right? Because you can't have every use, you know, defined in exactly the light on this ordinance. So, sometimes we have to make interpretations. What I would do is I would ask what the use is and get better clarification, and if I think it's comparable or comparable to these uses, then I would either take it through the approving process of these uses. If I didn't, I would say, I would deny the prospective use, and there's different avenues at which they could appeal that. But the determination would be made by the zoning administrator about whether they're similar uses to what's being allowed in this particular location. And then ultimately, Ms. Anzoli, it's ultimately a decision of the planning commission, because then they get to, then they have to go in front of the planning commission and get approval, too.
Does, does that, I can't remember, does, after they get a conditional use permit, does that come back to the board?
These use permits do not get approved by the board.
Well, I, I thank you for all of this information, and I do believe that the planning commission carefully considered this matter, and I happen to agree with them, so there you have it.
Okay, is there any questions or further clarification from our township planner, Ben Carlisle?
Yeah, I just have a general question, and forgive my ignorance here. When I was reading through the packet, and I appreciate your explanation of kind of approved uses, conditional uses, and like uses that were not permitting, I'd imagine there's some nuance between, like when I read through permitted, which was fabrication and assembly, we're basically saying as long as you're adhering to environmental noise ordinances and things of that nature, we're allowing that. But then we're further constraining it, and the conditional use is about some production and assembly. So, I'm, I'm just worried about gray space. If I'm reading that and there's wiggle room in my non-legal brain, like what is the, what, how are we enforcing that? If, unless that is well-defined in this, in the area I'm ignorant of.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question, and one that the township attorney, Mariah Think, and I went over in detail. And how we typically would make that determination is the more restrictive use would apply. So, if there's gray area, we would lean to the more restrictive use, which in this case would either be a conditional use or a use not allowed. And that's the typical way we handle zoning. If it's not black and white, the more restrictive provision applies, whether that's in setbacks, in height, whatever it may be, uses with a more... So, if there's gray area, we would make an interpretation. The interpretation would, I would typically follow on the more restrictive, and that would go through that process if it's a gray area. But we really tried, we tried our best to try to nail this as tight as possible, understanding that there has to be a little bit of flexibility on the developer's side, as well as there has to be a lot of protection on our side and our resident's side. So, that's kind of how we tailor this, and again, I think this went through five or six iterations, but back and forth between us and them about what we would allow, what we wouldn't allow, and the planning commission spent three or four meetings going through this as well. So, it was a, your point's well-taken. I think we're gonna be more restrictive in our review of gray matters here.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, any more comments or questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor? Oh, voice call, or roll call, sorry.
Supervisor Riley?
Yes.
Director Anzoli?
Yes.
Trustee Epikin?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
Trustee Joffre?
Yes.
Trustee Breck?
Yes.
Madam Supervisor, do you have sixty-eight?
Thank you, motion passes. All right, I will move on to liaison reports. Does anyone have a liaison report?
Uh, I do.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so, this is just the action summary, the top points, which is planning commission meeting, which held in September eighteen, two thousand twenty-five. The planning commission voted to approve the final site plan extension for C S P A nineteen dash twenty, located four seven oh one Carpenter Road. The second planning commission voted to postpone action on C S P A twenty-four dash zero eight and C U P twenty-four dash zero seven, quick trip. A thick end withdraw, C U P two five zero six and C S P A two five dash zero three, clean express car wash. So, no action was taken by the planning commission on that. As a discussion we held on short-term rental properties, we also have discussion was held on data centers. And the next planning commission meeting will be held tomorrow, October nine, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, that's really helpful. I think that the collaboration between the planning commission and this board is very important, especially when you talk about short-term rentals, and we talk about data centers, and we talk about just things that are coming into our community to be aware of, and so if anyone, you know, has any strong feelings about it, now the time is to sort of get involved, because we can clearly see that things get vetted out quite a bit in the planning commission. So, thank you very much, Trustee Joffre, for giving us that information. Also, just wanted to mention that on October nineteenth, we will be doing a safe and sound audit on Carpenter Road with the scarecrows, and anyone that can join us, we're gonna be walking that corridor.
Yes.
We've had several people die, quite honestly, just crossing that road, and there's been incidents over the years. There's been some measures taken to make that corridor safer, but at this point, you know, we have, we got a grant for a safe road audit, and we'll be getting the results of that from the road commission on that, in that timeframe, so before we do the safety audit, which will be nice, and then being able to hear back from real people who by get and walk it every day, so that we can plan for whatever we can do to make it safer. So, if you can make that on the nineteenth, we would love it. I think it's a two to five, is that correct? Thank you. I'll go for Bryce to help out. Any more liaison reports or things, announcements, anything? All right, well, if that's the case, then I will go ahead and open it up for public comment, too. Any persons may come forward at this time to address the board. Anyone who wishes to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Take your time, we're early.
Christine DeLaronis, one fifty-one, East Textile Road. I didn't quite understand where the safe road audit was. Did you say the state textile corridor?
So sorry, it's Carpenter Road.
Oh, okay.
And we're starting at Montebeller.
Okay, yeah.
Because I was gonna say Carpenter Road is...
Yep.
That's where the people have been...
Yes, I'm sorry.
Passing away, so, good, I'm glad. That's, that's, that's really important, that's, I'm really, really glad to hear that you're doing that, because that's just been just a deadly road for pedestrians, so, thank you, and I'll try to, I don't know, I'll try to make it if I can. Thanks, bye.
Okay, anyone else? All right, if not, then I will go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned at, what time is it? Almost seven o'clock? Six fifty-nine. Six fifty-nine.